...and ordinance banning alcohol ads on LA City property. That includes buses, bus shelters, and street furniture. Supporters of this ban say the city of Los Angeles should play a positive role in reducing exposure to alcohol ads to protect youth and reduce alcohol-related harm to all residents and visitors of the city. LA's Woolshire area showed its spirit and diversity at this annual police event. People came out for the LAPD Woolshire Division Open House, a chance for the area's Chinese, Korean, and Orthodox Jewish communities to share cultures and cuisine. They also got a chance to mingle with LAPD officers who patrol their streets.
That's how we grow as a community, learning about different people, different lifestyles, different... and that's really what we hope to accomplish here today.
People also took home trees to plant and got a chance to check out new and vintage LAPD hardware. The LAPD's West Traffic Division co-hosted the event. Not everyone has had the pleasure of walking to school accompanied by the mayor, but that's exactly what happened one recent morning, with the mayor encouraging students to make exercise a regular part of their day. Students from Woodland Hills Calvert Charter for Enrich Studies and their parents were joined by school officials and none other than Mayor Eric Garcetti for this special walk-to-school event dubbed "The Walking School Bus."
This is an entire month, so betting walking to school. Walk-to-school Day is something in which we try to get people to be healthier, we try to make sure that they know that they can reduce traffic and congestion and pollution by actually just walking with their kids to school.
Los Angeles Unified School District Superintendent John Dacey also escorted the kids to school as a way to highlight the benefits of walking.
We have more than 50 schools where we've launched the Walk-to-School. It's an opportunity to really promote a safe way to get passage to school, fun, obviously a whole group of kids walking together, and healthy.
The ongoing Walk-to-School effort is part of the city's Safe Routes to School, or CERTS, plan, which will initially focus on these 50 schools most in need of funding and programs to help increase the number of children who safely walk, bike, skate, or take transit to school.
We're going to also ensure safe routes to school, which is something the city has always done to help the school district with crossing guards that the city pays for, with making sure that we know that they are going to be safe walking to school.
It's really important to engage our families and our children to be healthy, and this is a great partnership between the city and LAUSD.
At least one set of parents says walking to and from school has another added benefit.
When I can, I do walk to pick them up and take them to school, because the parking's terrible.
Whether it's to avoid a crowded school parking lot or to better you and your child's health, school and city officials encourage families to leave the car behind and make the walk to school a part of their daily routine. In this week's list of things to do, a Veterans Appreciation Festival at the USS Iowa, an LA Conservancy tour of the Arts District, and an exhibit at the Moca Grand Avenue. The city of Los Angeles and Battleship Iowa present the Second Annual Veterans Appreciation Festival on Saturday, November 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The event is free with Battleship Iowa tours, free for those with a military ID. The festival will feature live music, food trucks, children's activities, and a Veterans Resource Fair. The Battleship USS Iowa is located at 250 South Harbor Boulevard in San Pedro. For parking and other information, go to portoflos angeles.org. The Los Angeles Conservancy has selected the Arts District downtown as the featured neighborhood of its annual one-time-only fall tour on Sunday, November 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The focus of the event is to highlight the history of the Arts District and how industrial buildings have been reused and adapted to meet changing needs over time. You'll also get to see some artists in their creative spaces as some studios will be open for the tour. Go to laconservancy.org for ticket prices and event details. And now on view at Moca Grand Avenue is the exhibit Room to Live, showing until January 13th. With an emphasis on recent acquisitions, Room to Live features selected large-scale works or single artist presentations from Moca's renowned Permanent Collection. The exhibit will include works in painting, sculpture, photography, installation, video, and slide projection. Moca Grand Avenue is located at 250 South Grand Avenue downtown. Go to moca.org for museum hours. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. There is another exhibit you shouldn't miss, it's not in a museum, in fact, you can catch it just by walking the streets of one neighborhood. Gil Reyes takes us on a tour of this unique urban art show.
Electrifying Boyle Heights with vibrant colors are these newly painted utility boxes on East First Street.
And turn an ugly electrical box that sticks out of the sidewalk, obstructs us when we're walking, is an eyesore into something beautiful that adds to the public art that we're trying to create here on First Street.
Councilman Jose Wezar, who's championed the city's mural movement, stops by to sample the works. This one by muralist Raul Gonzalez salutes his family's roots in mariachi music.
I wanted to give homage to my uncles. This is my uncle Rafael. He passed away last year, and this is his son, Osvaldo. And around the corner, I have my mom. She passed away last year also, she was a singer.
The councilman's office handpicked nine local artists to repaint the electrical boxes to reflect the neighborhood.
I think that for me, the image of a mother, of our grandmother, is very symbolic to our culture. And for myself, I had a great experience with a great grandmother, so I think it's important that I put that image up.
I just wanted to be free and playful with this, so I just put a lot of patterns and bees and butterflies and hummingbirds everywhere. I kind of went a little crazy with it.
It's the latest move in the revitalization of East First Street, which is undergoing the $12 million East Side Access Project. The construction you see around here is aimed at improving bike and pedestrian access around the Metro Gold Line. To help make the Boyle Heights Arts District more appealing to visitors.
We're going to put more public art on this street to appreciate art, talk about the history of Boyle Heights, and also to beautify it.
See for yourself on East First Street between Boyle and Soto Streets. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The beautification will also take place further north with more utility boxes repainted into artworks in the community of El Sereno. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. Now is our time to work as one. To create something beautiful. To start again. To ease a burden. To provide hope where there was none. There's so many ways to create the good, what will you do?
Start creating the good by visiting iparticipate.org.
G'day, Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Today is Wednesday, November 6th. If I could welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum, could you call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Buscagno, Sidion, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Coetz, Krikorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Krikorian moves, Parks seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request from the Office of Finance, if I am not mistaken. Excuse me, no sir.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, sir. There is a request to continue items 25 and 29 to December 4. Again, 25 and 29 to December 4.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 7 are items noticed for a public hearing.
Okay.
We do have cards on item 1, sir.
Okay, let's hold that, so that leaves us again with what item?
2 through 7, sir.
Okay, members? Item 3 will hold for Mr. Bloomingfield. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll. Whoa, whoa, is it 2? Okay, so we won't hold 3, so we can vote on these. I think, yes, Alan, it's 2 through 7, correct?
Yes, sir, 2 through 7.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to the next section.
Very good, sir. And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over for one week for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, hopefully we'll get to that number.
Very good.
So let's go to the next section.
Items 8 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held, again, 8 through 24.
Okay, specials, members, specials. 21 for Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Krikorian, you've got that look.
What numbers are we doing?
We're, Alan?
8 through 24.
Okay, let's prepare to... We'll hold item 24 for Mr. Wezar.
And, Mr. President, we should hold item 20 until the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report can be circulated.
And we'll do that as well. So let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 25 through 34. They're items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on 25... Excuse me, that was continued. 26, 27, 30, 32, and 28, sir.
Let's hold those items. Members, specials. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that item 33 be referred to Budget and Finance, please.
Okay, without objection, item 33 will be referred to Budget and Finance. Okay, let's prepare to vote, Mr. Clerk, on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. Clerk? Mr. President, that brings us to items 35 through 37. They're items scheduled for closed session. If we could hold them on the desk for a moment, that would be great.
Why don't we hold those?
They're all open sessions.
Wait, I'll defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. All of these are matters that have been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, which has concurred with the recommendations of the city attorney, and we can resolve them in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, I know there are some announcements that you need to make where it relates to these items. If you would go on and do so, and then we'll take a vote on them.
Very good, sir. In the case entitled Louis Rosales et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $975,000 in settlement. In the case entitled Earl Wright versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $1,498,884 in settlement. And in the case entitled Vivian Snyder versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $140,000 in settlement.
Okay, then, without... Do we have cards?
Mr. President, a public hearing was satisfied in committee.
Wonderful, then let's prepare to vote on these items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Brings us where, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Labange?
Can I just introduce someone, members here at council? They work for the city of Los Angeles. I just noticed them back there. Every time I see them, I think of greatness. Their father is still living, he was an Olympian in the '36 games. He ran 10,000 meters, he's a great advocate. Luke Zamparini, Luke, stand up. His dad, Louis, Lucky Louis is his dad. He, USC guy, Mr. Wesson, ran in the Olympic Games in '36. He came back here, went to USC, went in the service, was 47 days, shot down on a raft, survived, and a great story. But to see his son here, say hi to your dad, great job. Thank you so much.
Yes, say hello to your dad for all of us. All right, that brings us... Where are we, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 39. It's a matter on the continuation agenda, and it's an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, it's my understanding, though, that we want to hold that for a moment for Mr. Wezar, and I'll check with him. So why don't we hold that item, and that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to items called Special Public Comment for Items Not on Today's Agenda or Presentations.
Okay, I'm going to... If Mr. Krikorian could begin to get ready, we'll do his presentation, but maybe I can take up one of the simple items?
Mr. President, if you care to take up item 20, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report has been circulated and is now before council for consideration.
Okay, let's do that. We'll go to item 20. Comments or concerns, members? None? Let's vote on that item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now we're going to go to item 1, held by cards. I have Mr. Walsh, if you... I saw you earlier. Mr. Walsh will come up on item 1. And Mr. Herman, please come forward on item 1.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or jwalchconfidential.wordpress.com. A great big hello to everybody out here, and a great big hello back here to the undercover FBI agents in the audience.
Let's stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh, please.
I think they're on the subject. The item here is number 1. These are people that try to beat you out of money, unpaid taxes, Infinity Auto Park. They've been on here for months. What are they up to, about 2... Over quarter of... Most of it's on... A to F is Infinity Auto Park. They've been up here again and again and again and again, and people back here are fighting to make sure that Infinity doesn't have to pay the record lien. And then Tri-Hart, $44,000. Ladies and gentlemen, you want to know what's happening in this city? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman. Okay, I do not see Mr. Herman. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's... Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding we do have more than 12 members. Can... I think what we'll do, we'll vote for reconsideration on our odds, and then we'll vote on the ordinances again.
Yes, sir, and those would be items 2 through 7.
Okay, so we're voting on reconsideration. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now we will vote on the items themselves. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Miss... Okay, then we'll move on. We're going to do item 27, Mr. Clerk, and it was called Special by Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. Yes, Mr. Walsh?
Hello. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns CEQA and a negative declaration. What happened here is the alcohol... And we have children here, we have too many bars and alcohol places, too much alcohol. That's why people are being run over and killed and hit and run. Now what you're doing is changing a zone so you can keep the liquor store. I mean, what despicable... I'm sure the children here don't know what the word "despicable" is, but it's a good word, it's not a bad word. What a despicable thing you're doing here. You are... And this is all a deal set up here, and when the next person comes up, family, and hit and run, you'll vote a phony reward, which will never happen. You bend over backwards for every liquor store in the world. Liquor is bad, children. HollywoodHighlands.org, and they love them, because they get bribes from the liquor store owners.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's vote on this item first, and then I'll call you, Mr. Labange. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Labange for a intro.
Thank you very much, members. You know how good it feels when a school comes from your district. Sherman Oaks Charter is here right now, and we want to welcome Sherman Oaks.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Give them a big hand, thank you, their parents are here.
Sherman Oaks.
And I'm going to reserve 30 more seconds at the next... In between the next item. Thank you so much.
Okay, on, I believe it was items 27, fourth width, for Mr. Parks. We'll now move on to item 28, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, I do not see Mr. Herman. There are no members on the queue list. Prepare to vote on that item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. Mr. Krikorian? You ready? Okay, we're going to move to Mr. Krikorian for a presentation.
Seconds.
We're going to defer to you for 30 seconds. Madam Clerk, start the timer.
Real quick, I just wanted to do this. I don't want to make this announcement, you know, but in 20 months, there's a term limit, and I'm out, and I wanted to introduce the future here from Sherman Oaks Charter. Future councilman, tell us your name.
My name is Samuel.
All right, Samuel.
My name is Olivia.
All right, this is the class co-presidents, give them a big hand. And Labange's a future right here. It's LA Unified Charter, Sherman Oaks Charter. So, Joe, who would you vote for? All of us, that's what you're saying. All right, Joe, I still got 20 months. Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, good job.
Good to see you, Larry. I'll see you later, bye.
Mr. Krikorian, you better take advantage of this opportunity. Mr. Krikorian, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, yeah, I'd like to... Mr. Fuentes is joining me, I'm going to ask Mr. Englander to join me as well, so that I won't look quite so conspicuous with this ridiculous growth of whiskers that I have on my lip. I won't be standing here by myself. I'm joined by my colleagues, who are uniting in the cause. And Mr. O'Farrell, but that's kind of cheating, Mr. O'Farrell, because, I mean, that would be like saying Mr. Wesson is participating in this as well. But many of you have seen, as you've walked around City Hall, that there's a number of folks who are walking around with whiskers that they hadn't had a couple of weeks ago. And there's actually a very important reason for that, and that is that once again this year, City Hall is proud to support the Movember movement, a movement that has taken off globally as a grassroots advocacy and education movement regarding men's health, particularly surrounding men's cancers and men's mental health. And this year, for the first time in the U.S., there's a renewed focus on the mental health issues as well, which has been part of the global movement for some time. And Mr. Buscagno was joining us. And Mr. Buscagno was joining us last year. This has been something that this council has placed a great deal of importance on because all of us are impacted, one way or the other, at some point in our life by friends, family, or somebody that we encounter who's been impacted by cancer. And here, of course, in this council, we have been especially moved over the last couple of years as our former colleague, Bill Rosendahl, has gone through the struggles that he's gone through courageously and with great dignity. He's been a real leader, I think, in sending the message out to men that, yes, this is a difficult thing to go to, but with courage, with strength, you can pursue your life, you can pursue your goals. And he has done that, and we're all very proud to have been here and been supportive of him as he's gone through that. But what the Movember movement does is, causes us to ask questions. When we, when somebody sees me wearing this, they're going to ask me, "Why in the world are you doing that?" And it gives me an opportunity to talk about it. I think they'd even ask the question more strenuously with Mr. Fuentes, "Why in the world are you doing that?" But, but it does give us an opportunity to talk about things that are sometimes difficult to talk about, the importance of being tested for cancer. Because most of the men's cancers are so readily treatable if we just make the effort to get early testing and get, get those questions answered early so that treatment can, can begin. So Movember started with 30 men in Melbourne who decided to do something about these issues by growing these mustaches and getting sponsorships and publicizing the way they looked. That beginning in Melbourne has grown to 1.1 million participants throughout the globe. And I think that level of participation in itself has just been a phenomenal success. Over the course of the last 10 years that Movember has been going on, more than 3 million Mo bros and Mo sisters around the world have helped to raise millions and millions of dollars. In the U.S. alone, more than 209,000 participants have raised over $21 million. So it's, it's been a phenomenal success. We hope to continue to expand this grassroots effort and expand the visibility of, of this educational opportunity. And I'd like to ask my colleague Felipe Fuentes, who spoke so eloquently on Friday about the actual impacts that cancer has had on our population, to join us at the podium. Mr. Fuentes.
Great, thank you, Paul. And thank you, colleagues. You know, as I mentioned on Shave the Date, on the 1st of November, how important it is, as Paul just sort of underscored, for all of us to be aware of men's health. You know, I want to remind us that October was about breast cancer awareness. And we know that 1 in 3 women will be diagnosed with cancer. And breast cancer is the leading cause of cancer among women, which is why it's so important for all of us to really embrace November as speaking to overall men's health. It doesn't matter what part of the city of Los Angeles, whether it's the northeast San Fernando Valley or the West Side. Men, for whatever reason, don't attend to their physical and mental needs as well as they should. And we know statistically that men live five years less than women. And there's no biological reason for that. And so it's really important for all of us to understand that proper healthcare, access to healthcare is very important. But for men in particular, to be able to discuss openly some of the issues that they're facing to keep them healthy and overall their family's health. So as Mr. Krikorian mentioned, you know, I start off every community meeting these days sort of explaining why I look the way that I do in November. And, and it really is an interesting thing because in the meetings that we've had just in these short five days in November, you see a lot of shaking heads, a lot of folks sort of thinking to themselves, "Gosh, I haven't been to the doctor. I haven't sort of attended to something." And just yesterday, myself, I had been putting something off with some hip pain and went to the doctor yesterday, and now I've got to go again for something else. And it's really important that we do that. So I want to congratulate everybody here. I want to remind all of those of you who have not participated yet in a team, there are other ways for us to be supportive. On the 17th of November, for example, the Mustache Dash, taking place in CD1, will take place, and it's a 5K run. I'm eager to run it and looking for you all to do that, colleagues. That is a challenge, Mr. Bonin. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Fuentes. Now, as this movement has grown globally here in the United States, we have our representative, well, we have several representatives from Movember who are here. But Mark Hedstrom is the Country Director for the United States, and he's here to join us to speak more about what is happening here with Movember here in the U.S. Mark?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Krikorian, Councilmember Fuentes, the rest of the council here today, as well as Jeremy, for supporting our efforts. We're humbled by the amount of mustaches we see five days in, walking through City Hall. It's been an amazing experience. And I think, as they pointed out, they did a great job of actually hitting all the high points. Since our inception in 2003 in Melbourne, Australia, Movember's moved to become the largest single men's health movement in the world. We have representation in 21 countries around the world officially. We've had 3 million participants since our inception in 2003. This is our seventh campaign in the United States. Last year, we raised $21 million. And to date, in the seven years, we've raised over $48 million. Our focus with those funds and not just the fun aspect of growing what usually amounts to an awkward mustache for the first 15 to 20 days for some of us, but to the conversations that we're looking to have, raising awareness for men about the issues that they need to talk about, breaking down the stigmas attached to men not being able to talk to their friends or their family about their issues, whether they be emotional or physical, and going to seek help where they can. That's probably the most important thing that we can do through this campaign, and that's the awareness that the mustache brings to our efforts. With the funds that are raised here in the U.S. and globally, and because of our global reach, we have the ability to change how research is done, particularly when it focuses on prostate and testicular cancer. We now have the ability, and we announced in 2010 the Global Action Plan. And the Global Action Plan actually has five initiatives. And we set aside $10 million with the Global Action Plan 1, which is focused on diagnostic testing. With that $10 million, we actually funded 150 researchers from around the world. It's the first time this has happened in the history of scientific research. 150 researchers from around the world focused on just understanding what is the best way we can improve upon diagnosing the type of prostate cancer that men have. Those 150 researchers, some here in the U.S., some in the UK, some in Australia, some as far away as China, are focused on finding the biomarkers that help men diagnose of the 28 different types of prostate cancer they have. Which ones are they suffering from? And allows us then to actually tailor the treatment for those men. This is a revolutionary approach. We have the ability, because we are global in our reach, because the funds we have are raised at a global level, to actually support this kind of initiative, and we're excited for that. Beyond that, we look at not only research, which does take time to bring to market, whether it be treatment or diagnostic, but also the survivorship aspect. So here in the U.S., as well as around the world, we focus on both the physical and mental needs of men and their families who are being diagnosed with cancer and going through the cancer journey. The most important thing we can do as we wait for research to catch up and make prostate cancer and testicular cancer 100% survivable is to support those men as they're going through those treatment decisions. What is the right decision? How do they talk to their family? Are there end-of-life issues that they need to consider? Are there financial implications to their treatment? All of these things are equally important to finding a cure for prostate cancer, as well as testicular cancer. So we'll continue to focus on helping those individuals on that cancer journey, ultimately getting to the point that they have a long and healthy life. Thank you for taking the time. And again, thank you for the council for listening to us today.
Thank you, Mark, very much. Thank you, Mark. I also want to just take a moment to thank my staff, my whole planning team, Carl Trocean and Doug Mensman, who are participating in this, but especially Jeremy Oberstein, who, first of all, has the really awkward-looking mustache over there. And Jeremy really is responsible for bringing the Movember movement to City Hall about four years ago, when he first started talking about this. And I want to thank him very much for that. This is about going from the question, "What's on your face?", to having all of us say, "What are you facing?", to our friends and relatives, and "How can we help?" And so for that, I want to just thank Movember. I want to thank Mark Hedstrom and the representatives of Movember who are here, and congratulate you and thank you for all the great work that you're doing for all of us.
Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you all so very much. And Mr. Krikorian, a thank you to your staff, and good job. Okay, Mr. Weezer, we're gonna move to item 24. We have two cards on that item. Oh, no, it's my understa, no, but it's, did you have someone you wanted to speak? Or can we just move forward?
Just go with the cards, and then I'll, yeah, I'll speak after that. Yeah, that's fine.
We do not have to take them unless you have an additional speaker. Public hearing has already been satisfied.
Yeah, can we open and test them, maybe two of those speakers?
For you, yes, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So what we'll do, we will ask for, I think it's Blair Bestin? Blair Bestin, and Arnold Sacks? I don't see, okay, and Arnold Sacks, please come forward. Ms. Bestin?
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. We talk about being a more business-friendly city, and these are the kinds of changes that we need to be making. This motion came out of stepped-up enforcement of unpermitted sidewalk seating back during the May Art Walk. And some of the targeted restaurants have been in existence for decades. Some were brand-new and just wanted to beautify their storefronts. So the business owners and the property owners came to me frustrated by the belabored process of sidewalk seating permitting. It's sometimes taking nine months to a year, costing them thousands of dollars. If you're not serving alcohol, it's really difficult to make that money back. So I just wanted to say that our neighborhood's growing. It's not becoming just a vibrant neighborhood, but it's for people who live and work there, but it's also becoming a destination. And there's no doubt that the sidewalk seating planters and cafes are setting that atmosphere. I want to say I'm thankful that the historic bid was able to work with CD14 and the community to craft a sensible process in this pilot program. And I'm confident that it will succeed and be a model for the rest of the city of L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And my question about this item actually really doesn't deal with the sidewalk seating, but more in line with the process, the fact that the hearings are being expedited and the situation that allows for the, the movement of this hearing and the action by the council to move forward at a half, quicker pace. I know for a fact you had an item on your agenda regarding the makeup of neighborhood councils. And it was sent back to the city attorney's office for them to rework the ordinance. But it wasn't sent back in an expedited fashion. And I think that's just as important because neighborhood councils get to look at some of these situations up close and personal. And the makeup of the neighborhood councils is important, and it should be looked at. It should be expedited. It should be reported back. Because they're, what, in the battle line? They're in the trenches, right, where the action takes place. And for you to allow certain situations to be expedited, well, what's the process? Go to your city councilman? I mean, is there a process involved so that people know? I mean, people talk about advertising on their stores. There was a story about certain stores in the valley who had small signs on their stores, and they found out...
Mr. President, he should bring it back to this.
They found out that they were illegal.
Get back to it.
And so the question again is, how do you expedite the process to allow those stores to have a hearing on whether their signs are legal or not? And who do you do, who do you see in, in that situation? And if you're gonna be open and transparent, be open and transparent for all your constituents and not for a select few. And I appreciate the fact that you're looking into the sidewalk widening. But again, it's the process I'm asking about and how you do it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, we began looking into this issue back in March when businesses in downtown L.A. were being cited for having outside dining tables and chairs and umbrellas around their areas. And we found that there was some confusion with some of the businesses about whether they even had proper permits. And we found that BOE, despite some hard work there and their best efforts with budget cuts, had an extremely long workload and other issues that created a backlog of permit requests. And so what we've crafted here today, I think, will help not only guide us to create more activity on streets, but will help our complete streets approach that the city is taking to make our city more pedestrian-friendly, but will also help the businesses better understand our permitting process, and ultimately will make it cheaper as well. Currently, if you apply for one of these permits, it could take about a year and a fee of anywhere between $1,900 to $6,000 to get these fees, to get a permit to have outside dining. With this pilot, we're gonna reduce that fee to $577. Now, I know that Mr. Krikorian is not here right now, but he would, as a Chair of Budget and Finance, would say, "Well, where are we gonna miss out on those? Why should we miss out on those dollars?" Well, the fact is that we're just gonna become more efficient. Instead of actually having field investigations by BOE, they could look on Google Maps and find other creative ways to cut down on expenses. And so this is actually finding efficiencies in the way we permit for outside dining. And so I want to thank everyone who made this possible, particularly the downtown constituents, Blair, and everyone else who brought this to our attention. I want to thank the BOE staff, Michael Cantor, and Shaheen Beddin, who worked with my office in developing the new policy. And also thank my staff members, Sarah Hernandez and Eric Martel, for their input as well. And in, for the Public Works Committee, Council Chair Fuentes added a report back on the program in six months. And I think that's a great idea so that we could look at that and see if we could expand this citywide after we work out the kinks here in downtown Los Angeles. So thank you very much. And colleagues, I ask for your "I" vote.
Okay, with that said, we will open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, now we're gonna move to item 30. I believe item 30 was called "Special" by Mr. Walsh.
And Mr.?
Did you check that? I think it's item 30 called "Special" by you. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
And for clarification, for item 24, both the Public Works and Personnel Committee reports were adopted.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns the Hollywood Walk of Fame. And the first time I set foot on it, 1966, when I was living in Westwood. It was very impressive then, and it was beautiful. You could eat off it. You could eat off it. Now, it's dishonor to the city, cracked, falling apart, sunk. It sunk because of the subway tunneling. That's another story. The LA Times did do that story. So what you need, tourists come and they sing Peggy or Lee. Is that all there is? They don't realize what, how beautiful this thing was, how it started at Hollywood and Highland. Most of the stars are cracked, they're filthy. The trust in charge of it, Laurent Gublis Trust, do not clean them. The trust in charge of it, Laurent Gublis Trust, do not clean them. Go out and take a look. Take a look at the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Tourists don't come to L.A. until they clean up the filth of the Hollywood Walk of Fame and the blood that is spilled on there by people who are knivved. And now, okay, so what this does is transfer funds to finance the permitting process for the reconstruction of the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Well, have you heard anything about the reconstruction of the Hollywood Walk of Fame? Have there been any media about that? No, the media keeps shut. The media has never said anything. Take any camera, go out there, anyplace, and just focus and see. And many of those stars are still alive, and they're stars—the condition of the stars is a dishonor to those people, a dishonor to them. And we're asking you, first of all, the Hollywood Trust, which is state-funded, it was state-created, that takes care of the Hollywood Walk of Fame, that is, they have all the money in the world to do this, they're spending the money. You don't have to spend a dime on the permitting process. The shame of Hollywood, the Hollywood Walk of Fame stayed in discondition. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Mr. Labons, did you want to have a word?
Because I know this is a passed motion, and I want to thank a worker of the past, council member, Mr. Garcetti. But Mr. O'Farrell, I want to thank you. There is work being done to improve the Walk of Fame. As you know, there has been age to it, and I know just on the block between Cherokee and Las Palmas, they corrected that. And also, you'll be impressed—I just say this, Mr. President, there's a gentleman who has no legs, who goes out there and polishes the stars. So there's a lot being done by the community, the Business Improvement District, and Mitchell O'Farrell and his team. And as someone who's adjacent to it and there a lot, I just wanted to thank you, Mitch. And I also want to thank John Walsh. He ever wants to volunteer on a cleanup, he could join us as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, we're going to move to item 26, called "Special" by Cards. A John Walsh, followed by Arnold Sacks. Mr. Walsh, item 26. Mr. Sacks, item 26. One minute, Mr. Walsh.
One minute. 60 seconds—I'm a 60-second man, anyway. 26, again, this is a deal. Look at this agenda item. Go to it if you're out there in the audience. They are selling this city-owned property. Anytime you sell my city, I am very, very suspicious. This is city property. But take a look. Who are they giving it to? Safran and Associates, a developer. Okay, well, let's take a look. How much are they selling it for? Take a look. It's not mentioned. Nowhere in there, $8 million, $10 million, if it wasn't for someone like me to bring it up. We are selling our city to developers, 15 to nothing. That's the way you're going to do it, because that's where you—you—all your money comes from developers. Show me where in this agenda item, how much are you selling my city for to a developer named Thomas Safran?
Thank you.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's—Mr. Sacks, you do want to come forward? Please, come on.
Yes, thank you. A quick minute. Thank you very much. As important as he was talking about who they're selling this property to, but where exactly is the funding from the sale of this property going to? I believe when Councilman Sadio came to the council chambers before he was elected, he had some questions regarding a property in his district that was being sold to an automobile dealership to expand their property. And the funding that was going to be appreciated from that sale of that property ended up going to the DWP revenue for pipeline something. So it doesn't mention anything, A, or B, how much this property is being sold for and where exactly the revenue is ending up in the city's myriad of financial shenanigans. Please, let the public know what it's sold for, where it goes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sacks. Let's prepare, colleagues, to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Bloomingfield, we can move now to—I think it was 21. So now, members, we're on item 21.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to call everyone's attention to this item on the live council session status update, because doing it is making everyone's job easier and making it easier for folks who want to follow along what's happening in council. The session status updates provides information about what's going on during a council meeting in real time, what item we're on, what's been voted on, what's called special or continued, and which members are present. It's been integrated into the city clerk's mobile site, which I hope you've already bookmarked. So part of it is I want to urge everyone again to bookmark that site. It's cityclerk.lacity.org if you want to take advantage of this tool. I mentioned this tool when we were hearing the issue on the bull hooks last week, and it was—we got it up and running, and so people could use it that day. But now, when we take this action today, this site will officially be live and will officially be blessed by this council as we move forward. So that is a—it will be a longstanding, permanent thing that we have, and that's the action that we're taking today. I encourage you, everyone, to share this site with their constituents so that you can track what's going on. You don't have to be in the room exactly at the time things are happening. And I also just wanted to take a moment to thank the ITA and the clerk for working with me on this. They did a yeoman's job on it. They've been great resources on this and many other initiatives in the ITGS committee. And I wanted to take the time when we had this item to thank them, because they made this possible.
Thank you, Bob, for your good work on—with that committee. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
What do you want to do next? We're going to move now to item 32, called "Special" by Cards. Mr. Clerk, isn't Mr. Walsh—or is he out of time? Okay, so Mr. Walsh is out of time, but Mr. Sacks, please come forward on item 32, Arnold. Item 32.
Yes, thank you again, sir. Item 32 refers, generally speaking, to federal government shutdowns and kind of overlaps on item 31, where you're concerned about the senior lunch program, which you trumpeted in the last budget sessions by saving it from federal government shutdowns. Well, just so you know, we have diminishing resources, and it's one of those things—you know that old poster that said, "There's no such thing as a free lunch"? Well, this is in reverse, and in diminishing resources but increasing expenses, means you better start looking at the bottom line. And the fact that if you have programs that are concerned—and you're concerned about the federal funding, then it's time to start looking at the revenue that goes into the council districts and tying them together. Not revenue that comes into the city per se, but revenue that goes into the council districts that ends up in your council offices. And again, I point out as an example, Councilman Sadio's action where he got $1 million, three months into office, $1 million to do cleanup in his district. Where'd that money come from? It wasn't agendized, so it wasn't approved by the council. It came from his council district office. And if you have funding and you want to promote and blow your trumpet about how you're going to save senior lunch programs from the federal government's acts, where do they stand in reference to other senior federal programs that the city has? You have Section 8 vouchers. Is that a—that's a federal-funded program? You have transportation program. You have Ara, American Fast Forward, which was supposed to do street repaving. And you had an inventory of streets. How many streets got done in the city of L.A.? Do that act. Start counting your chickens.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Let's prepare, members, to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Did I—
15 ayes.
Okay, so now we're going to go to item 39. Mr. Weezer, I think we held that item for you.
Oh, yes.
Item 39. Now, just to make it clear, item 39, the public comment period has already been satisfied.
Sure.
So let's just move forward and take care of the issue ourselves.
Thank you.
Mr. Labons.
President, this item went through plum. I'm not sure if the maker of the motion, Mr. Price, wants to speak first, and then, as the chair of plum, Michael, speak afterwards, however you like, sir.
You want to speak first, Mr. Price? Then, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Chairman Weezer. I introduce this motion so that we, as a new council, can fully understand and come to a decision on how to best improve the development process in our city. I understand that the previous council and mayor decided that consolidation was a good idea, arguing that it would save the city money and be good for development. But in the CAO and the CLA's report, it states that no real cost savings are projected, except for the elimination of one GM position. And in the 2011 Development Services Study, consolidation was not recommended. So I believe that we need to slow down and ask ourselves, is consolidation the best approach to improving the development services in the city? As it stands now, the contractor matrix cannot answer that question for us, because we haven't asked them to do so. We simply said, tell us how to consolidate, never asking, is consolidation a good idea or what the other options are? I, for one, want to know what those other options may be. I believe that we need to expand the current scope of work for the consultant so that when we discuss improving development in our city, we will have several options on the table and can make the best decision possible, not to constrain ourselves to consolidation or nothing. And since the consultant has said that the expected scope of work will not cost the city any extra money, I don't see any negatives for moving forward at this time. So I ask for your support of my motion and the joint committee report, and ask that we expand the consultant's scope of work and not rush the implementation of this complex issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And colleagues, this is a very important item that really speaks to an effort that we've been undertaking to figure out how to best provide and streamline development services in the city of Los Angeles. And as you know, one of the things that we've been concerned about is how long it takes for economic development activity to happen in the city of Los Angeles. This item was proposed a while back, and I want to thank Councilmember Englander for his attention and focus on this item, because I think it's brought us to a point where more attention is being paid to this. However, when we met in Planning Land Use and Management Committee and we took up this motion, our consultant, looking at this item, we asked him if he thinks this could be completed by January 1st as originally directed, and he said he didn't think it could. We also asked the CAO the same question, and he didn't think it could be completed as directed currently to be—have these two departments consolidate by January 1st. And in fact, there's a lot that needs to go on. And so we concurred in committee and supported the motion. But as we agreed to give more time to look at this, we also thought it was important, as Councilmember Price pointed out, that we give the consultant some flexibility to say, well, you should also look at whether consolidation makes sense or not. At the end of the day, if the consultant comes back and says, this does make sense, this is one of the best things you can do, so be it. And we will look at that and move in that direction and discuss it. But right now, we at least thought that—in committee—that if we not only delay this because we can't do it practically by January 1st, but also give the consultant some more time, which was what Councilmember Price's motion stated. So I think this is the right approach. We've got to be thoughtful, methodical, not jump into this as quickly as originally proposed. And again, I want to thank previous mayor, Mayor Veregosa, Councilmember Englander, and all those who have brought us up to this point, and also Councilmember Price for looking at this and saying, hey, we got to take another look at this and make sure we are on the right track. So thank you. I ask for your eye vote on this item. I think it was also approved in Budget and Finance, correct? Yes, thank you.
Now, Mr. Weezer, thank you. There's two more speakers. How about adding Labons to that chorus of calls? Mr. Englander, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. And I want to thank you all of you as well. When I originally brought this motion in to look at consolidation and to look at streamlining the services and creating efficiencies, it came from many, many years of work on this. In fact, I'd started working on this about 14 years ago, far before I ever worked in this building. But without getting into the history of this, survey after survey, year after year, whether it's the Cosmont Cost of Doing Business, whether it's BizFed Survey, the United Chamber Survey, article after article, as we all know, the city of Los Angeles is labeled as one of the most unfriendly, difficult businesses to conduct business in. And the two top issues in every survey and every study, year after year, has been the taxes and the business tax. And, you know, we're doing a lot to try to either eliminate or greatly reduce those and categorize them correctly, eliminate certain industries that we've done, like new car dealers, and bring those back to generate sales tax. And then the other big issue has been the bureaucracy and getting things done, to open a business, to expand a business. Businesses want certainty and looking at different models and best practices. So I thought it was a good idea to hang a lantern on this, and it was something Mr. Kocorian said that really struck me when we talked about this in committee. He said, you didn't just hang a lantern on it, you put a spotlight on it. We made this a dialogue and a conversation, and we're going to continue to have that, whether it's a full merger, whether it's functional transfers, whatever that might be, whatever comes out of it, whatever it is, is that we continue to focus on making the city more efficient, more business-friendly, more streamlined, more transparent, with more participation. And that's really the goal and the objective of this. So I look forward to continuing that conversation. It has to be—it must be a top priority for the city for economic development, to make sure that we're competitive both locally, nationally, and globally, and to attract businesses and be more friendly. And so that's really what the objective of this is. I do urge your eye vote on this. I really, truly appreciate the attention by both the city personnel, the department heads, the mayor, the council, the industry, the stakeholders, the neighborhood councils, and certainly our council president. Mr. Price, thank you for your motion on this as well. And I look forward to this process as it continues to make sure that we get these answers and we can make these policy decisions to make this a better city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Keretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I thank both Mr. Englander and Mr. Price for their good work on this. I agree with everything that Mr. Englander said. We—we have to resolve our problems with the business community and the unfriendly business climate that we've created over the years. The important thing is, rather than just say, let's do this consolidation, we absolutely have to do it instead of putting the cart before the horse. We have to do it by identifying all the things that we want to accomplish and then say, do we have to consolidate to accomplish these things, or can it be done in some other way without the chaos, without the change? And so that's the big question. Does the consolidation have to happen to achieve all the goals that we all agree we must? L.A. City has been known for being too bureaucratic for many, many, many years, and this has to change. So let's do it the right way. Let's not just consolidate for the sake of it, because we could find five or 10 years from now, we're back separating them again. I know other cities have had that experience. We really need to identify exactly what we're trying to accomplish and then identify exactly what we have to do to get there. And whether consolidation will help us accomplish that, I'm not at all clear on that issue. That's why it's so critical that we study this carefully.
No other speakers on the queue as we go forward with this. Let's also involve our neighborhood councils and neighborhood associations. And also, I might add, from experience, the mayor's office of economic development, whatever development that force is important for good development in our city. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
15 ayes. Send it forthwith, Alan, right away. Forthwith. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that leaves us with the special meeting and general public comment.
All right, let's take the vote to go to special, correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
To go to the special, we recess—
No, sir. We can recess the regular.
Recess the regular?
And convene the special.
And let's convene the special.
Very good. Bloomingfield, Bonnabous, Keinosi, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Keretz, Kocorian, Labons, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 15 members present. And a quorum, Mr. President.
And the item that we have right before us right now?
It's item 38. It was a item for which a public hearing has been held.
Correct.
There are Budget and Finance and Public Safety Committee reports that are now before council for its consideration.
And Mr. Englander, and maybe Mr. Kocorian, albeit, call on Mr. Englander at this time.
Great, thank you very much. What's before us, colleagues? Council is in-car video, digital in-car video. And we've really invested already a lot into Phase 1. This is Phase 2 of the system. And this is one of the chief's priorities, and I absolutely support the chief and the department in these efforts. We spend tens of millions of dollars each year in lawsuits and settlements and staff time and research and investigations of what happens during an arrest or an encounter with an officer. And the ability to film, both in the backseat of what's happening in a black and white and in front and around a black and white, is critically important. And so this launches the second phase of that. From a risk management perspective, it's extremely helpful. I want to thank the Police Protective League for their support of this as well. But really, Charlie Beck, our chief, who has really been a leader in ensuring that we have not just the best equipment and the best-trained officers in the world, but that we're also in the forefront to make sure that we're transparent, that we're honest, that we show and can confirm any and all allegations made in encountering— that we show and can confirm any and all allegations made in encountering an officer in a situation. And it protects the officer as well. And we've seen from Phase One, the statistics which are before you, that shows that most of the reported incidents on an officer that are captured actually on film are found not to be true. And so this backs that up. It will save a tremendous amount of money for this investment. I think it's well worth it. I'd like to bring up Maggie and Dan Gomez, if I could, Sergeant Gomez, to talk about this in a little more detail and breadth. And if we could really give them the attention they deserve, they have put, this is the team right here, this is the A-team, that has put so much effort into looking at all the details in terms of policy, data storage, the best technology, working with the officers, the training that goes into this. There's been a lot of work, a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. And this is just yet Phase Two. I'd like to see this expanded, obviously, citywide. We've got a report coming out on costs, going back to the Budget and Finance Committee on that as well, and the cost of the program. But overall, the cost is an investment, where we'll see that come back on a return to us and the taxpayers and savings from these lawsuits. So please, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Maggie Goodrich, I'm the CIO for the Los Angeles Police Department, and I have Sergeant Dan Gomez with me, who has my tactical technology section. What's before you is Phase Two of the in-car video implementation, which will roll out in-car video within Operation Central Bureau. Phase One of in-car video was actually completed about three years ago in 2010 in Operation South Bureau. That put in-car video cameras both forward-facing near the rearview mirror and then also a backseat camera to capture transports in each of the South Bureau cars. That program has proven very successful. We've captured about, as of about a month ago, we captured approximately 170,000 hours of video just in South Bureau alone in the three years that it's been running. And that equates to about 840,000 clips of video that are captured in South Bureau. We have been really pleased with the product, which is why we're going with the same camera vendor. This time, it'll be a different integrator. This is a contract with Raytheon, who will serve as the prime on the contract with Coban Equipment still being the sub to provide the actual in-car video system. It's proven reliable and has served us well thus far. And so we're ready to begin Phase Two. Thank you.
Mr. Englander.
I'd ask that CIO come up as well to answer any of the financial costs to any of the members. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I call on Mr. Kocorian at this time?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank the department. This is a real, this is a leap forward, I think, for the department to provide more transparency to the police work that's being done on our streets. It's also, I think, going to prove to be an important cost-saving measure because too often in Budget and Finance and before this council, we have to resolve lawsuits of claims of police misconduct and things, which we believe not to be true. And yet, there isn't sufficient evidence to be able to demonstrate to a jury that it is not true. And I think that the presence of the cameras will actually be a significant improvement in our ability to defend those sorts of lawsuits. And I think it's important to move forward for that reason as well. There's a small difference between the report of the Public Safety Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee in that we are both entirely supportive of moving forward with this contract. But in Budget and Finance, we requested a report back on alternatives to the short-term commercial paper financing mechanism that had been proposed for Phase Two of this project. We need to move forward with the contract without delay, and that's what I would move that we do. I would move that we adopt the Budget and Finance Committee report, which moves the contract forward but calls for a report back on other options for financing it rather than short-term commercial paper. The first phase was entirely paid for with cash, and so we just want to hear what our options are for paying for this contract in Phase Two. So I would move the Budget and Finance Committee report with Mr. Englander's forbearance. I would ask that we move forward with that report.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Englander, close.
So then we would go ahead and file the public safety report and approve the Budget and Finance report, and I would agree with that. Also, I think it's important to thank the CIO's office because they've been incredibly creative and working hard to find funds. The Police Foundation, by the way, it's not reflected in this report, is also stepping up and contributing a million dollars towards this effort. In addition, and it's not part of this file or this report, but for conversation, so you know, and you've read it certainly in the press, is that I've partnered with our police commission president, Steve Soboroff. And we've gone out there and promoted on-officer video. And that will certainly help this system as well to capture what's happening away from a black and white on every officer, to have a camera as well. And so that's happening, and we've raised well over a million dollars. And we've started and we're initiating the in-the-field pilot test on that, the street test, if you will, is happening as well. So I urge your eye vote, and we'll go ahead and support Mr. Kocorian's recommendation on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No speakers on the queue. Thank our CIO and our public information officer, not public information, but the technical information, ITA for the LAPD and sergeant as well. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifty-nine.
And Mr. Clerk, forthwith, forthwith. Thank you. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, would you like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Yes.
Very good, sir. That brings us back to general public comment.
General public comment. John Walsh, please, followed by Arnold Sacks.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Always a pleasure in front of Tom LaBanche. We won. The Millennium Towers are not going to be built. We won. They have announced indefinite postponement. If I could live to the day those Twin Towers are built, I would live to be 5,000 years. We have won. Neighborhood activists, you have lost. Chaos at the airport, chaos. Why? Because the armed guards were not at the entrance. The Patrick Gannon, the chief of police of the Special Airport, police should be removed. 3,000 years ago, at the pyramids, the Pharaoh said, protect my pyramid by putting guards at the door, guards at the entrance. Chaos, because we didn't have guards at the entrance. You deserve it. Now, Rocky Patel, incidentally, the FBI agent, the undercover FBI agent, and I think we have three undercover FBI agents in here now. And I'd like to announce that I am going to expose him, undercover FBI agent, someone who calls himself Dollhouse Dude. He's actually a 30-year-old white guy, and he is named Jack Armstrong in clever disguise. Don't trust anybody. Why isn't Weezer here? He's too busy getting an AIDS test because he has a new aide. Okay, I just want you to know that in the FBI affidavit, it says that one of you is under FBI investigation. It's there, and that, of course, is, guess who? Mr. Weezer. I just want you to know that we are going, Chris Shabel will be buried tomorrow. Come to our website, HollywoodHighlands.org. Look at the memorial, and you'll find out all the details. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Arnold Sacks.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Next week is Veterans Day, and yet, nobody from the MTA has offered to allow vets to ride free. So I'm wondering if maybe the mayor could step up or one of the councilmen who are on the new MTA board would step up. But again, it's too late. So year after year, you trumpet behind the flag and how you appreciate the veterans, but the MTA says, sorry, $1.50. The DWP anniversary just occurred, 100-year anniversary, and it was amazing to read some of the stories. But really, what should come out of that? If somebody could step up, maybe the DWP, whatever commission, the relationship with the DWP and the Metropolitan Water District, because DWP buys water from the Metropolitan Water District, yet DWP is a big player in all the water transfer that comes to Southern California. And exactly how that plays out, that DWP would be buying water from the Metropolitan Water District while also being a big player in the importation of water into Southern California. And a little bit about the airport incident and what a fiasco actually was. I mean, Councilman Bonn wants a little report on this. But 10 years ago, there was a Culver City police officer shot in the downtown level at the airport, tied up the airport for hours. Nobody could get in or get out. So what lesson was learned from the Culver City police shooting incident? Nothing. You know, the dry ice bomb, people in Disneyland just got sentenced to prison. And again, that case was adjudicated through the courts prior to the dry ice bombs at LAX. What lesson was learned from Disneyland? Say hi to Mickey.
Alga Hall, please, followed by Mr. Herman.
Myths and Lies of the Otter. Why did Jackie Otter lie by presenting a false accounting sheet at the time of the merger, pretending the Otter endowment had $100 million, when in fact, their endowment was only $1.8 million? How could the Otter, with only $1.8 million, take the responsibility of the Southwest Museum and the restoration and conservation of the collection? These are facts. The $100 million was an easy-deceiving tactic to take possession of the Southwest Museum collection worth $1 billion. The Southwest Museum, at the time of the merger, had more than $4 million in endowment. Does it make sense to you that Otter's $1.8 million could save the Southwest Museum that had more than $4 million in endowment? Otter is still in the collection and destroying the history and legacy of the first museum in Los Angeles. What are you going to do? You are the people responsible to protect the assets of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Herman.
The impoverished, the homeless, has become an urgency of the city of Los Angeles. It should be an urgency. Why? Americans remain stuck in poverty despite what L.A. says? And what about the 86 officials, including the city, the county, schools, officials that are facing up to $100 in fines? Why? They reflect of their gifts they're receiving, right? Receiving gifts. So rather than getting into all the jargon of today's conversation, let me sing a song for all of you to enjoy. When I was a young man, same City Hall, but it feels just a little bit like this now. Mr. Weezer. When I was your man, some say City Hall, but it didn't feel or just feel like a little bit bigger than yesterday and grander than today. Our song at City Hall is on the radio, 'cause the gadflies are here to speak out against you. Your flowers, Mr. Weezer, but now you're not here. Same with all your friends in console. Talk about all the things we had to give. It just doesn't tear us down, 'cause my heart breaks a little bit longer with another man.
Well, you completed your comments. We thank you for your comments. Have a good afternoon.
On guard, thank you. So yesterday's protest in front of City Hall regarding masks? I don't need a mask because I'm an advocate for the city of Los Angeles and looking in interest of all you, the public.
Thank you very much. Good comment there, Sid. We want Sid. Methuselah, Sid, please. Sid, your turn, Sid. Brian, you're next.
Good morning, councilmembers. First of all, let me thank District 14 and Mr. Weezer for his vision regarding the pilot program. I also like to thank Mr. Sadio, Mr. Busciano, and Mr. Price for their leadership, also being on the committee to see that pilot program go forward. To give you, gentlemen, a good news and the lady councilmember, is that on the first of this month, I was able to file for our B permit for the sidewalk improvements for the San Vincent Court. And I would like to thank few individuals regarding this particular aspect where we are. I'd like to thank Mr. Edward Jordan, the managing assistant city attorney. I'd like to thank Mr. Michael Cantor, deputy city engineer, Mr. Juan Nagim, which is the supervisor of BOE. I also like to thank Mr. Shaheem Bahdini, Wesley Tangier, which is the supervisor of the B permit, Armenia Aguilar, also an engineer, Linda Margaret, also an engineer at the B permit, Greg Van der Grift, Jessica L. Martinez, Helena McNeil. Also, I don't want to leave out Cesar Madrano, which they all were professional. They did help me a lot. And we hope that within the next four to five weeks, this application will be approved and the construction will proceed at a tune of about $150,000. So I'd like to thank the entire council. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Weezer's office, the staff, Sarah Hernandez especially. And thank you. What can I say? I hope we'll see better days ahead.
Sid, since you moved forward, good job, all that work, and thank you for thanking all those employees. Brian, Brian Baras.
I have this title, "Hatred for Obama Presidency Spreading Institutionally."
Excuse me, hold this time, please. Mr. City Attorney, on public comment, you must address issues that reflect the city of Los Angeles. Continue, please.
Sure. The breakdown of any policy deliberation is also intersecting a dangerous phenomenon within the population, which is the growing frequency of violent outbursts of insanity from the LAX shootings to the more recent armed standoff at a New Jersey shopping mall. There is a general breakdown of social cohesion, driven in part by the Obama policy of brutal cuts in basic social services, the chaos of the government shutdown, and the growing sense that the president is a pathological liar or worse. As Lyndon LaRouche said this afternoon, after getting this picture, "The only way out of this mess is for Obama to be immediately impeached and removed from office before he gets us all blown up." He added that the reason there is no pretense of policy deliberation is because the orders are coming to Obama directly from the genocidalists in Britain. Now, ladies and gentlemen, you know, I read this, it's called Galician, I believe, from St. Paul, and there was a particular saying of St. Paul that says, "Well, if I'm your enemy for telling you the truth, and if the United States represents truth and honesty, then let us be candid. But if I'm your enemy for telling you the truth, and if anybody else wants to hear the truth, then they should abide by the constitutional authority given to us by God Himself through Jesus Christ. So let us impeach him and pass Glass-Steagall."
Juan Icahala, Juan Icahala.
Well, let's see. There are so many issues with this city. One of my biggest ones is, you keep telling me how beautiful the city is. The city is total crap. Look, the streets are all broken up. This is what happens to your bike when you bike around this city. There's no bike lanes. There are cracks all over the street. The same cracks that I've seen for the last five years are getting The same cracks that I've seen for the last five years are getting bigger and bigger. And you keep asking for meter money, parking meter money and all those things. Hey, you are doing business the wrong way. My main issue is that all your policies make you guilty of murder. How? Because you make it impossible for a person to live inside a shelter. And by doing that, a lot of people die out on the streets, and you are guilty by association, because you will not step down and change the laws of real estate so that everybody can have a place to live. You need to get off your high horse and go down and see how the people live. You have to get around the city and see how many bridges are filled with homeless people. And you gotta go see how mean the cops go against the homeless people. And you gotta remove all those cops that are extra nasty to people just because they don't have a place to sleep, a place to live. You are all guilty. You are all criminals, because you uphold a system that is not helping the people.
Richard Robinson.
Mr. President, members, Academy Award contenders are sparring for the prize, fighting for Oscar. This, sir, this season of motion picture productions is extraordinary. Harrison Ford and Ben Kingsley are starring, headlining a new motion picture, Ender's Game. Because it's geared for a younger audience, it is considered not a serious film. But Ender's Game, of course, Ender's Game, will not win the Academy Award. This motion picture, Ender's Game, has not been puffed enough, because it is structured for general audiences. Because...
Mr. President, he is not talking about a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city.
Hold his time. Weave it back in, Richard.
Because Harrison Ford and Ben Kingsley star with a cast of teenagers of such extraordinary talent, gift, because of those youngsters who represent the future. See it.
Richard, have a good day. Good to see you. That completes public comment. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered. Any announcements, members?
Desk is clear.
Mr. Englander?
Council members, this Tuesday, it appears that we will, in fact, be having the funeral service for the TSA agent that was killed the other day. So I'm coordinating all those efforts with TSA for the dignitaries and the electeds. So we'll be in contact with your offices today. We're working with LAPD. It looks like it'll be this Tuesday. We're on council recess for National League of Cities already. But if you could hold your calendars for 10 o'clock at the sports arena, we'd like to have as many individuals there from this body as we possibly can to show our respect and support as well. So I appreciate it, but we'll let you know this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Englander. Any other announcements? I always like to tell people spring forward, fall back. We all changed our clocks. Make sure we change our batteries at our smoke detectors. This completes our announcements. Any adjourned motions? No adjourned motions? Go forward and serve the city well. Every day's a blessing. This meeting's adjourned.